All right, good evening. I think it being 7:05, we might as well start the 7 o'clock meeting. This is the February 21st meeting of the Oversight Committee of the Quincy City Council. We are here this evening to discuss, I know, I'll do that in a minute. We're here tonight to discuss 2018-14 and Ordinance Amending Municipal Code Title V by deleting Section 5.40.090, secondhand motor vehicle dealers and replace with 5.40.090, used car dealers and motor two licenses. Madam Clerk, if you would, please take the role.
Counselor King, Counselor Crowell, Counselor DeBona.
President.
Counselor Harris, Counselor Hughes, Counselor Liang, Counselor Mahoney.
President.
Counselor McCarthy.
President.
Chairman Palmucci.
President. And just for the record, Counselor Hughes had spoke to me earlier today. She has at least one, possibly two, sick children at home, so she won't be joining us tonight. I'm sure she'll be watching us on television, though. And Counselor Harris also wasn't feeling great tonight and was not going to be able to make it, but did relay some neighborhood-specific concerns that I know he has relative to this ordinance and some businesses in Ward 6. So, does anybody have anything they want to say before we get started or get right into it? Okay. So, the game plan tonight is we're going to take some testimony, allow an opportunity of counselors to ask questions of some of the folks that have been invited here tonight. And then at about, what is it, 8 o'clock, 8:15?
8:15.
8:15. We're going to open it up to anyone from the public who wants to weigh in, not necessarily to ask questions, because that's not how a public hearing works, but to tell us on the council what they think about the ordinance, whether they like it, don't like it, whether they think something should be changed. And obviously, we take that testimony into consideration while we're deliberating these matters. I know there have been some written communications already. We'll enter those into the public record. I'm not going to spend the time to read them now, but those will be available to the counselors and to members of the public who would like to read them. So, just a couple of introductory remarks before we get started with our first invited guest tonight. This legislation essentially, the purpose is, and I don't know what we have for a mix of folks out here tonight or anybody else watching, the goal of this legislation is not to hurt any small business owner. It's not to make conforming with government regulations any more onerous than it perhaps already is. As a small business owner myself in the city, I understand and appreciate how valuable folks' time is when you're running a business. You're the, you know, you're the CEO, you're the CFO, you're the HR director, you're everything. So, you know, I don't take lightly the thought of lopping on another government oversight on anybody. However, I think, in my opinion, I'm the author of this ordinance, in my opinion, I believe that there are some shortcomings in the way in which the city currently regulates and oversees motor two licenses. And these are used car dealerships, auto repair type shops, those are the folks who have these licenses. So, it's really, as chairman of this committee, of the Oversight Committee, it's my intention, and I'll state it to you, it's my intention that we work productively both with neighbors, with residents who may have concerns about these properties, as well as with business owners. This is, as any ordinance I write, it's a starting point. It may also be the ending point, but for right now, it's a starting point. And if people have strong feelings one way or the other, we ask that they share them with the council. And perhaps we can make improvements to the legislation. Perhaps there's things in here that we didn't think about. Someone else reviewing this with a different set of experiences and coming from a different perspective might see something differently. So, you know, this is, I like to, in the legislation that I draft and the hearings that I oversee, I like to make it a process. It's not a, you know, the cake's not baked here. This is just one of the ingredients. You know, this is the recipe. If folks have other ingredients they want to throw in, we're all ears on hearing that, okay? But really, what this boils down to and what the basic premise of what we're trying to accomplish, or what I'm attempting to accomplish with this legislation, is reining in some of the excesses of some of the folks in the properties who run these or have these motor two licenses. There are a whole host of these types of businesses around the city. I believe there's 65 or 67 across the city that hold these licenses. I can think of at least three, two or three in Ward 4, that I get complaints from residents all the time. I drive by them all the time and you see them. They're just stuffed with cars. They look like a junkyard. And the city of Quincy, for a long time, and continuing to this day, does not allow junkyards in the city. We don't allow junkyards in the city. You have rusted-out vehicles. I have one particular property that is, there's a tree growing through a rusted-out vehicle. I mean, it's, there's been excesses in this particular industry. And the goal of this legislation is to bring everybody into the same standard, the same conformity, that they keep their property in a condition that is both safe as well as not detrimental to the neighborhoods. We've, other counselors have told me they've gotten reports of businesses parking on sidewalks with the extra cars because of the overflow. There, there lots are stuffed. They'll park on sidewalks on residential streets, they'll block residential side streets. And quite frankly, some of this stuff, this behavior has just gotten out of hand. So, that's what we're, that's the problem we're seeking to solve tonight, and we look forward to working with everybody to find a solution that is not only reasonable in terms of it meets that end, but also reasonable in terms of it's not too onerous for the business owners, because we don't want to hurt anybody. That's not what we're looking to do. It's the last thing we want to do is make anybody's business life any harder, okay? So, that being said, any other counselor want to weigh in? See, we got Counselor Crowell is present, Counselor Liang, present. All right. So, the first person that I asked to come and testify tonight and provide some input to the council was City Clerk Nicole Crispo, if you will, Madam Clerk. So, I'd ask Nicole to, actually, this, Nicole's been working with me on this for quite some time and helped me create this legislation, but Madam Clerk, if you could just speak to what the status is currently, so, not this legislation, what's the rules about motor twos currently? How does someone get a motor two license? What's the process? What's the oversight requirements, et cetera? Oh, hold on, I got to turn your microphone on. Hold on. Try it now.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right.
And members of the council. Currently, there is an application process that people come in and apply through a pretty vigorous application. They meet with their, or talk with their city counselor. They pay a hundred-dollar fee. They come before the licensing board and they request a number of cars to be sold and worked on at their property. And so far, you know, that's been up to the licensing board on the number of cars that go on the lot.
And is there currently any type of minimum standard in terms of how many cars can go on, on a particular lot when someone's applying for a new license?
No, there's not. There have been lately, for new owners coming in, we have asked them to draft a plan on their parking, so, to be reviewed by the license board, but it's very few and far between that have a number associated with their lot.
So, some of these lots don't even have any number of minimum, maximum number of cars associated?
That's true, yes.
Okay. And I know that when we were looking into this over the past year or two, I mean, some of them, some of these license holders have had these licenses since the 50s. I mean, there's a whole different way of doing business back in the 50s.
That's right. You know, I got some calls that John Gillis grandfathered people in and Joe, you know, they know Joe Shea from the Elks and things like that. But, you know, being here in the capacity of a license board member this evening, I do think it's time that we set a minimum standard and we try to all abide by it. The city is growing, there's more people, certainly more traffic, and the overflow is, you know, going out into the neighborhoods.
Have you had an opportunity to review the legislation?
I have.
What, what if any comments do you have on the legislation overall?
Well, the need for the regulation come through the city council as well as neighbors and constituents' concerns. There is about 65 used car dealerships in the city, and the conditions, the volumes of cars, the tidiness and the cleanliness is certainly becoming an issue.
Not just me, right, complaining about it?
No, not just you. You know, we've, we've had calls, in 2017, we had about five calls that we actually had people come in to the licensing board. We've had-
License holders?
Yes, license holders. We've had, I know Jay can speak to this, Ken Burke, go down, the compliance officer. But it is hard to find people when the compliance, the implementation isn't really there. There's, there's not many rules and regulations to go around.
Is that typical in other licenses overseen by the license board, that there aren't minimum standards and a set rules and regulations? Like, is that the same with an alcohol license?
No, everyone follows a strict application and review and compliance.
So, fair to say this is a-
Was a gray area.
This was a gray area in the licensing board operations as to how these licenses were granted and overseen?
Yes.
Okay. Now, in terms of the legislation, what process, after reviewing the, I guess, after reviewing the legislation, what process do you envision moving forward if something, either this or something similar to it, were enacted? What would that process look like for these license holders?
Okay, so, we're implementing a plan in our office, signed, along with the signed ordinance, when it's, when it's complete. Would be a premise dimension provided by the Inspeccional Services Department will be delivered to the used car licensees. Licensees will have 90 days to come up with a compliance with the provisions of the ordinance, a parking plan, and submit it to the license board to be maintained on file. After the 90-day implementation period, the license board officer will go out and inspect for compliance with the ordinance prior to the annual renewal date of December 31st.
So, tell me a little more about the annual renewal date. These, are these licenses on an annual renewal cycle already?
They are, yes. Every December 31st. And what we would like to do is, you know, get, we will input all the numbers into our system, so then when a constituent calls, or a counselor calls, or even, you know, somebody looking to open a new business there, they can find out straight away how many cars are available to be sold on the site.
So, it'll be set right in the license that's granted?
That's right.
The, what the maximum car-
Allowance.
Allowance is?
Yes.
Okay. And so, do you see, with the 90 days to comply, do you see that, I mean, I guess it would be, it would depend on when we-
That's right.
-enact the ordinance, but I guess at the latest, possibly, it could be like a year, right? Say we enacted one December, or say we enacted January 2nd of next year, and then the license expired December 31st. Would you say that folks would then have that time period, or would they have a shorter time period to come into compliance?
I put 90 days. I was hesitant to put any dates because of when it comes out of committee and is passed. But we figured 90 days was fair and then would also give us time to input the data and also have the compliance officer go out and check the sites.
In terms of the license renewal process now, what, do you have a hearing for the licensing board for all 65 license in December when they come up?
No.
Okay. And do you envision that you-
The bills go out.
Go ahead.
Excuse me. The bills go out and they bring in their insurance papers and their receipt, and they get a new license.
So, it's an administrative procedure?
Yes.
All right. And if this ordinance or something like it were passed, do you anticipate that there would be a public hearing before the licensing board at any point for?
Every license board meeting is a public hearing.
No, no, I understand that. But I guess what I'm saying is, I'm thinking from the perspective of one of these license holders, what if I disagree with the number of cars that I'm assigned? Do I have a, do I have a process by which I can appeal to the licensing board at a public hearing to make an argument that I should have one, two, however many more cars that I want?
I think that going forward, we would always, you know, look at another plan if that plan didn't suit the new owner or the owner that's there now, and we could, you know, the five on the, on the board would make the decision.
Okay. Did you have anything else that you thought significant that you wanted to add relative to the council's deliberation on this ordinance? Any other thoughts from your perspective as clerk or member of the licensing board?
No, I think we've pretty much covered everything. If you, if anybody has any questions for me.
Okay. Any other counselors, questions? Rookie McCarthy, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Nicole. Just to, just to back up, and I, you probably said it and I dismissed it, are all the car dealerships, used car dealerships, the licenses are all annually?
They are.
Everything's all annually?
Yes, they are.
There's no exceptions?
No.
Okay. And, and I know that the chairman talked a little bit in regards, a second ago, about the licensing board. If this ordinance or an amended ordinance goes through, would there be some way to bring in an organized fashion, everyone back in to the licensing board at some stage to try to go over what they have for a layout now currently at their locations? Let's just say someone has improvised and added spaces they're not supposed to have, or, or they want to come in. Would you, would you review them all, 65 or so, to make sure they're all complying with this, with this new ordinance? Almost like a zoning board meeting to take a look at the plans?
I mean, certainly, we would. But I think that the officer, the license board officer, when he goes out to do his compliance check, will either come back with a positive recommendation for that dealer or not. And then, we can, we can take it further. I mean, the rules of the ordinance are clear. Whether they change from now till when it's implemented, that's fine. But whatever it is that is in this order, we're going to try to abide by for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Mahoney beat you to the punch. Hold on a second. Counselor Mahoney.
Thank you. Nicole, maybe a couple of questions I have. There's about 65, did you say, currently?
Yes.
Could we get a list of the 65 that we're talking about and the locations that they're at? And then also, you had mentioned that when they went before the licensing board, in some cases, they were, they were, they were granted the license with an accommodation of how many cars they could have. Do we have that association with each of those licenses as of right now, so that we know?
We do. But like I said, excuse me, but like I said, they are very far, few and far between.
No, I understand that. So, I think it would be helpful to know what the, where the locations are and what those, what those car, how they came about that. That's, it's, it's obviously, they didn't have, they didn't have any regulations, so the area was gray and they, in some situations, they might have given 10-car locations to one and 20 to another that had the same amount of space. And that's some of the challenges that we're having right now. But I think it would be helpful, too, for all of us here on the council to know where the businesses are and what the current licenses are quantified for at this time. And then also, maybe a sample of, you know, when you're, when you have, just a sample of what a lot would look like, to say that this is kind of what you're looking for them to give back, a sample, kind of a dummy, if you want to say.
Of course. We do have some, you know, on record now that, that look good and clean and, you know-
Sure. I think just when you're, when you're, when we're talking about an ordinance like this and you're talking about businesses that are currently existing that are going to have to comply or retrofit into a new ordinance, I think it's good for them to be able to see how, what their expectations are to be able to meet the qualifications of that new licensing. I know it's a discussion that we're having right now, but any kind of paperwork that we can have to show them, to kind of guide the businesses, to let them see what you're talking about, to be able to help them identify what they're going to be able to do. There are up and running businesses now that want to stay up and running, and we want to, as we said, we want to make this an ordinance that works both for the community and for the businesses that are working. Because most of them are, I don't think all of them are, are causing a problem, but some of them that are, we just want to help pull back in line, or-
That's our goal.
Okay. Absolutely. Sure.
Thank you, Counselor Mahoney. I agree with you. It's, and perhaps I didn't state that at the, at the front, my introductory remarks. It's, as with anything when we regulate things, it's 85%, 90%, we don't have a problem with. It's the, you know, that last couple percent that are the sore thumbs. Counselor DeBona, do you want to, your question, comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under, under Section 4D, Failure to Comply with Ordinance Provisions Penalties, under first offense and second subsequent offenses, the first one's for $100 and the second one's for 200. What is the time period between those two offenses? And is there a third or fourth, or how does that proceed? And what is the timeframe between offenses? Or do, would you know that, or Chairman Palmucci, would you know that?
Well, I mean, I can, when, in drafting this, a first offense is the first time it happens, second offense is the second time it happens. I think anytime you have regulations, you have to assume and presume that our code enforcement officials are reasonable people. And if they're, you know, someone's out of compliance by 100 cars on day one and they move 50 on day two, you don't write another ticket for being out of compliance on 50. So, and a lot of folks who hold these licenses have called me and I've said that. If you're out of compliance, you know, for an hour because you have an extra car or two because you didn't expect people to drop off, you know, cars for auto repair, that's reasonable. Really, what we're trying to target here is the folks who have, who have space to hold five cars and they have 15. So, I think that that's probably going to be in the discretion of Mr. Duca and his, his team as to how and when they levy fines. They can also, obviously, as you know, issue warnings. So, yeah, that's kind of how I think the implementation. But Mr. Duca is going to go next, and that might be a good question for him if you, if you want, I can tee you back up with him.
Sounds good.
If you have anything else for, are you good with Madam Clerk?
Yeah, I am. Thank you.
All right. We're good with you.
Okay.
So, you don't need to stick around.
Okay.
Thank you. Jay, do you mind if I take Chief out of order? All right. If I could have Chief Barron come up, I think Chief would be relatively quick. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for joining us. Do you have an opportunity to review the legislation?
Yes, I have. I've gone through it a few times, and it certainly does present some improvement over having not had these guidelines, particularly for public safety, as, you know, the license board is made up of different disciplines and naturally, my focus is fire safety. And, and particularly of note is the additional parking spaces that are available here to, to employees, which I think at times is very problematic. So, and then clearly defining the, what constitutes a space for these vehicles, which I don't believe we've done in the past. Some of our drawings come in not as professional as maybe they should be, and, and so this certainly has that improvement. Though we don't have a lot of fire incidents in these properties, but certainly, when we do get them, the close proximity of vehicles makes it much more difficult for fire crews to work. And what's becoming exceedingly prevalent in, in the latter, my latter years on the department is, is the high rates of cancer in firefighters. And I remember as a young firefighter, before we were using breathing apparatus continuously, one of the most toxic things that you can come up against is a car fire. And so, having the space to walk around them represents a big improvement. And then access to the site, whether it's somebody going to take a test drive with a car that they're not familiar with, being able to get in and out of the site certainly represents an improvement as well. So, all in all, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of it as it's written, and I think there's a lot of good work that went into it.
Fair to say that there's a legitimate public safety concern relative to overcrowding of vehicles on properties in general?
Absolutely. It's-
And I forgot, when I invited the three of you guys, I forgot that you all sit on the licensing board. Until you were walking up, and I just completely forgot that you all sit on licensing. So, I guess it's kind of have a quorum of the licensing board tonight, right? So, it's fitting. Does anyone have any questions, comments for Chief Barron? Good. All right. See, we just have you here because you look so good in the suit, you know? I mean, the uniform, it's-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Thank you very much. And you don't have to stick around either. I appreciate you being here, Chief. All right. Mr. Duca, Jay Duca, the Director of Inspeccional Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Have you had a chance to review the legislation?
I did.
Okay. Before I turn you over to Counselor DeBona, just a couple of points, questions I want to get out. So, this is something you and I have been working on for quite some time in terms of compliance with this. And your office, at my request, did an assessment of the license holders in Ward 4 at some point in the last year or so, right?
That's correct.
And I think, I think fair to say that when you did that assessment, that there was some significant overcrowding at certain locations that was identified?
Yes. I think we did the whole city council.
Oh, did you? Okay. I only, I only looked at Ward 4, right? I mean, I only look at what pertains to me. But, so, just in general, I guess, when you did that, you did the assessment, you and your team were out there and you saw that there were some, some issues and some overcrowding. What, if anything, were you able to do with our current legislative regime in place? What could you have done? What can you do now if someone's overcrowded, way overcrowded?
Well, it would be helpful to know what the actual count is, what they're licensed for. It'd be helpful to have a fair and consistent way to regulate that, to look at it and decide who, and, you know, just make it a fair game for everybody.
And currently, we don't have that, right?
We really don't.
For everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. So, just from an enforcement perspective, why is that a problem?
Well, enforcement is all about being fair and consistent. When you're providing enforcement, you want to make sure that it's fair and equitable, that everybody follows the same rules and that really is necessary to be able to enforce.
And so, it's really not fair ultimately if somebody has a number attached to their license and you're enforcing that, and then somebody else, another business owner, doesn't have a number attached to their license and there's nothing to enforce, right?
Correct.
It's kind of same businesses competing against each other, playing by different rules.
Correct.
That's my, you don't have to agree with that. That's, that's my characterization of it. Okay. And so, what are your thoughts on this legislation, having reviewed it from your perspective, not only as a licensing board member, but also as the Director of Inspeccional Services?
Well, it would be helpful to have a clear count on each business, something that's fair to everybody, and as you said earlier, we don't want to hurt anybody. But I think if you look around the city, some places, you know, if you go by square feet, how many vehicles they can fit on the lot, some are gas stations, some have canopies. So, I think all that has to be taken into account, the actual net area that's going to be on each property.
Do we have anywhere else in any other municipal ordinance or, yeah, whether it be zoning or anything else, do we have regulations that speak to number of parking spaces, size versus lot size? Do you know?
Not really. When it comes to storage, parking spaces are different than storage of vehicles. That's not really regulated by the parking ordinance. But again, I think each place is different, and some places keep their vehicles in really tip-top shape, others have some really bad-looking vehicles. So, I, I think it's going to, a lot's going to have to do with each individual space, each location is going to be unique in its own way, I think, with this. And I think- And I think we may also look into, I would ask, maybe consider signage on the property as well during the whole package. Some of these used car lots look like circuses.
Right.
So on and so forth.
I often find myself reminding people that we have a ban of neon signs in the City of Quincy. We just, we don't allow it. Some exist, but we don't allow it. So, also, I guess, I kind of got my brain working, but on, in thinking about that, and that every site's different, I would imagine access to where the driveways are, how many there are, you know, entrance, egress, main streets, first side streets, that would probably play a role in the kind of layout of spaces and what we would afford somebody.
Especially if they're on, you know, like a place like Quincy Shu Drive, I mean, it'd be nice to see some landscaping and, you know, I don't know if we can do that retroactively, but those are the kind of things, I think, makes the difference between one place and another place.
Right. Right. Whether or not it's aesthetically pleasing to have, you know, on the edge of a neighborhood or something like that. All right. Any questions for DeBona? You want to go first? Council DeBona, hold on a second. I didn't turn you on. Council DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay, good to see you tonight. Good talking to you before the meeting about our blights out there in the city, our blight residences out there. We're doing a good job with it. Thank you. Just on this failure to comply for under D, the first offense is $100, the second offense is 200. It looks like there's a three-day written notice and hearing by the licensing board. What criteria do you need to get from first to second, and then after second offense? What do you do from there?
So, typically, in enforcement, each day is a new violation.
Okay.
Generally speaking, and as the council pointed out, you try to be reasonable. You know, people are trying sometimes. You don't want to necessarily write a ticket. Sometimes a warning is really all you need. But the enforcement is there in case we need to use it.
And what criteria does it designate that a car is on the lot that's not going to be sold or used for a used car? And what is being a used car? Is there, like, something that has to be on the, like, a pricing? Does it have to be on a windshield or a door? Or how does that, how does that work?
Well, typically, you go in, and, you know, they'll have some pricing on the vehicle. You'll count two vehicles. Doesn't mean that, you know, a vehicle next to it isn't for sale as well. There's really no way to know. So, I think, you know, overall, the number of cars on the lot is really the key number that we're really looking for.
Whether there's a sticker on there or a price tag, it's the amount of vehicles?
Yeah. I don't know if that would make a difference if we broke it down like that, or just had a total number. I hadn't really thought of it like that. But I do think it's the number of vehicles total on the site.
Sure, sure. Because I'm just looking at loopholes. I mean, when you do something like this, and the dealer may come out and say, "Well, that one's not for sale, this one is," and, you know?
I think you're always, I don't know if we could, I don't know of a way we could really deal with that.
Okay.
And I would, I would expect people to just follow the rules.
I mean, just elaborating on what Council Palmucci's kind of brought forward, I've driven down the street and seen some of these cars parked up on, basically sidewalks. The front fenders are up on people's sidewalks, which is, which is an area for just pedestrian access. So, those are the ones that I really, really need to kind of tailor back at making sure that this is instituted correctly.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Council DeBona. And I will add that I reached out to the, I forget the name of the agency, it's Department of, Division of Professional Licenseur, I think. It's a state, there's a state agency, and I, someone had informed me that there's a whole nother state set of regulations that apply to used car dealerships, and that the council would, could benefit from reviewing those in terms of how it plays into what some of the things a city's trying to do. So, I'm waiting to get a copy of those regulations, and I'll distribute it to the counselors when I do. All set, Council DeBona?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Council Liang, let me find you. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Jay. So, can you just walk through for me, as it stands right now, without this ordinance, you know, say, I'm a resident, and I call in an issue or concern for a used car lot, does that get called into then, reported directly to you, or does it get reported directly to the licensing department?
You could call my office, you could send an email online. In many ways, you can call on the phone, and then somebody will go out and investigate.
And that somebody comes from your office, or from the licensing? And so, then you deploy somebody from your office to go out and inspect it, and then, let's say, a fine is issued, and that's on record, that a fine has been issued for this particular instance, does your office then continue to follow up on it until it's resolved?
Yes.
Okay. And if this is then implemented, and it goes through as is, does that still just go through the same way it does right now, where any issues that come through still go through your department, it still gets deployed through your office? Any follow-up in, you know, follow-up for fines, or follow-up for fixing the issue still goes through your office, correct?
Yeah. We would be the first responder, if you will. Not that it's an emergency, but we will investigate it and determine whether it's a violation. We may give a warning, we may give enforcement. We will also work with the licensing board and the city clerk. We may, if it's a frequent flyer, we may have them come before the license board for further action.
Okay. So, just as it is right now, as it's written under 4D, with the failure to comply, and it talks about violations in enforcement, you know, it says here that may be cited by any person authorized on the licensing board. And so, if this does get implemented, you will be able to continue to work closely with the licensing board to make sure that, you know, all of the offenses are tracked and they're logged properly, and that if something does get kicked over for another hearing, or when somebody wants to go for a renewal of their license through the licensing board, they can easily pull up every activity, or any activity, I'm sorry, through your office for that particular location, correct?
Yes. We log, at Inspection Services, we log every complaint that comes in. We may not even advise the license board of a complaint, we may just deal with it. Unless it's a frequent flyer, we, the license board may not even be aware of it. As long as we're resolving the issue, they can probably just go and renew their license without any problem.
Okay.
As long as they're in good standing.
Just for the sake of, again, just making sure that, you know, if we're moving forward with this, and it's a way to make sure that it's cleaner across the board for everyone involved, that all of the records are also then maintained, right? Because, you know, let's say this gets implemented, and it's the same two or three businesses that are constantly doing this, and it sets a bad reputation for the rest of them, you know? I think it'd be beneficial for everyone involved with the licensing board as well to be able to go back and say, "Okay, these are the three, or two, or one that are consistently having these issues," and just to be able to pull that up every time there's a renewal. You know what I mean? I think, I've never had an issue with your department, I just want to make sure that the hard work that you guys are doing then gets also easily accessed by the licensing department, who's going to be issuing that license. And so, I don't know if that's capable, if that's possible through our current, you know, through our current IT, or if that's something you'd have to manually then send over, or?
Yeah. I think I, so what I'm hearing, what we could do is, when we get a complaint, and it has to do with used cars, we could also keep a separate file and share that with the license board. So, they have that during licensing renewal.
And I'd say it'd be beneficial to not be repetitive as well, because let's say, then they get issued a license again for another year, and somebody comes back and says to the licensing board, "Hey, you issued a license, I went to that hearing, why did you do that? I have, you know, tenant issues that I have logged here with the inspection service." I just don't want anybody to be caught off guard by that again, because if you guys are going out and doing the work, I think it should be easily accessible for the licensing board as well.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's because Nina pretty much covered everything that I was thinking of as well. But I do, no, no, that's not it at all, not it at all, Brian. I guess this is kind of a combination question, though, to Nicole. Because Nicole, you said that you're going to be meant, you said you're going to be inputting these new licenses, these requirements, that you'll be inputting them into a system. So, what system do you input them into, the new, or what system currently do we use? I just, I'm kind of following up what Nina was just saying, because I was thinking the same thing as she was saying it. How do you, rather than you keeping a file and sharing it some other way, is there any way, technology-wise, that we can, you can see what's being happening?
Yes, there is. So, this past year, our license board secretary is now on View Finder, which is what Jay's department uses. Did we use that for violations with car, motor 2, and used car? No. Will we go it forward? You know, we can write it in as an amendment in that we do share that data, and I think that'll work out just fine.
Yeah.
And perhaps we set a number. You know, after, you know, six violations, perhaps they come before the board, you know, going forward, or 12, or, you know?
So, what's the name of the software again? Sorry.
View Finder?
View Permit.
View Permit.
View Permit. So, I think that's something, too, that maybe we could look at the state regulations to see, Brian, if the state gives you any indication as to when a license should be revoked, or put on pause, or something to that degree, and we could build that into your system. Because as Nina was just saying, you know, the fact that we're going to be putting all of this work into creating something that the businesses are being asked to comply to, it doesn't do us any good if the businesses that are not complying to it are getting relicensed. And it's just a matter of being able to hold accountable for people. And I'm going to guess that same thing, anything that's coming before the licensing board, like a license is all of the same thing, anything that has to go out and have checks on it should actually be going through the same system so that we can actually make sure they're were checking and cross-checking those things. But this is something new that we're doing, and I think it would behoove us to be able to set it up correctly at the beginning, so that it's saving time on the, on everybody's parts, to be able to ensure that we're getting the right communications, so that we're not reissuing licenses to potentially the bad apples, that the small percentage of people that are violating those rules.
I know that, you know, Jay's department does a great job going out, trying to minimize an issue before it becomes bigger. But, like you say, we're happy to use the permit process and log that in going forward, and, you know, set a limit to then have a hearing for habitual violations as they come forward.
What's the timeframe, too, for when you have a violation for collection? So, if you have a fine, $100 fine, a $200 fine, and then what's the, how much of those fines typically do you collect?
We're supposed to pay it within 21, 21 to 30.
21. Okay. And do you typically find that they're paying it, or?
What we usually do when we have leverage as far as issuing a license, that is the best way to make sure we collect whatever fines we collect.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mahoney. And I will just reference Section D, page 3 of 4. Section D, 3rd paragraph, "Failure to comply with the provisions of this ordinance with state consumer protection statutes or any license terms," yada, 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 "may result in suspension or revocation of any license after three days' written notice and hearing by the licensing board." So, it's not just about first offense, second offense, there's a fine. At any point, the licensing board can give a license holder three days' notice and revoke or suspend the license based on any violation of this ordinance or of the consumer protection statute. So, a little bit touches upon, I think, one of the comments that you made about, well, I think it touches upon one of the comments. Anybody else? Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Duca.
Good evening.
Just a couple of quick ones. The $100 and $200 fine, where do we come up? Is that a standard licensing fine number that we come up, 100 or 200, that happens to other venues? Is that?
Actually, I think Counsel Palmucci come up with that.
Yeah, I didn't want to hurt anybody. $100 gets your attention, $200 gets double your attention.
Okay. I just wanted to know if that was the standard that was already followed somewhere in the licensing board venues that are out there besides, and I know they're all different.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then, just to jump over to Section B, number 3, it talks about the area controlled by the businesses of sufficient size, and we get into, and I talked a little bit with the chairman on the way here, a 10 by 20 spot, that's a big spot. I didn't understand where we, again, I know we're just kicking it around in draft, but if I'm reading this right, there are no spaces no smaller than 10 by 20. I thought that was a, an awfully large parking spot that might, in regards to the owners of the used car dealers, would really suck up their space. I just wanted to look at that number a little bit more, in regards to the size of the spot in there. Then maybe some of the other numbers that we have in there that I can talk to the chairman a little bit, Jay, and talk to you, just to make sure I'm clear on number 3 on licensing, to make sure that we give these folks a fair shake at, you know, what their layout's going to be in their lot, so they can maximize to whatever number we want them to get to and keep it organized, which I'm in full support of what the chairman's trying to do. But 10 by 20 was just, it seemed awful big. I didn't know if, again, that was another requirement we had to go by because we're in a used car lot, or I think most spots are like 8 by 8, or 8 by 10. So, just, just wanted to throw that out. Thank you.
Jay, do we have any numbers? I know in planning circles, like 8 by 8, or 8 by 6 is kind of a minimum standard size for a parking space for a compact car. But do we have any, is there any guidance anywhere else in any other ordinance, or any other zoning code that speaks to the size of space? That you, I mean, I'm not asking if you know the number off the top of your head, if you do, great, but if you don't, is there somewhere else that maybe we could look to for?
Most of the zoning codes that I've looked at, the 9 by 18 space is typical, a couple of variations of that. But that has to do with parking, and, you know, then you get into drives and turning radius, and it's all in the parking rooms. But as far as storage of vehicles, I'm not aware of any particular number that works.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. And Counsel McCarthy's point is well-taken about that size. I know the couple of business owners that called me, that was the, one of the main things that they asked me about, and I said, "Well, let's talk about it at the public hearing." So, anyone who's going to testify, I'd love to hear what you think would be a more reasonable number, and, you know, I'll go out there with a tape measure and see if, you know, if it makes sense. Happy, like I said, happy to work with folks, not trying to be onerous here with people. All right. Counselor Mahoney, and then we're going to get Solicitor Timmons for a couple minutes before we go to the public hearing, or public comment period. Counsel Mahoney?
This will be fairly quick. Jay, you also mentioned signage, and I noticed that signage is, signage is, in and of itself, is a separate ordinance that we have for the city. But we're specifically talking about this ordinance for this, for the licensure of getting your license, and I think we should probably mention signage somewhere in here. We can reference where the ordinance is for signage, but we should be a little bit more specific then, because you mentioned that that was also an area that needs to be kind of reconciled at the locations?
In some locations, you know, it kind of tends to get out of hand, because really not regulated by the signed ordinance, but you've got these stickers all over the cars. For me, when I look at a site, you look at, you know, what kind of vehicles they are, what kind of signage, whether they have landscaping, and the fences are all in good shape, those are the kind of things, I think, in addition to how many cars are in the lot, make a difference.
I just think if we're going to be, we want to be a little bit more prescriptive, if we're going to be mentioning things here about the ordinance, and we're talking about signage, is that something that we want to actually mention in this particular ordinance for this particular type of business, so that we kind of have it all buttoned up? If we're going to mention it, I think we just want to make sure that we're being specific. It may not have to be in here, but if it was, it should probably be underneath the maintenance of the business premises, and it could just be a reference to that ordinance for where signage is for the city, as to the requirements for signage. Or it can't be, you know, we just have to be, obviously, we have to be prescriptive of what we're trying to communicate to these businesses as well. So, it's fair.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mahoney. All right, Mr. Duca, you are relieved of duty. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Jay. And last but not least, City Solicitor Jim Timmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the committee. I reviewed at the request of Counsel Palmucci the ordinance, and it's well drafted, I didn't have too many issues. I have one primary concern, though.[1765.33] In Section B, it talks about, in paragraph number two and paragraph number four, that the business, the principal business has to be used car, motor II sales. And I had shared with Counselor Palmuji just a thought that I know of a couple of businesses, I won't mention names in fairness to the folks who are here or whatever, but I know of some businesses in the city now that their principal business is not selling used cars, but it is part of what they do. By way of example, there's one entity I know of that is primarily an auto repair business, but a large accessory component to what they do is selling used cars. So I have a concern with that word being left, or that term, principal use. And I had a discussion with Mr. Duca today. It was not primarily about this ordinance, but one of the things he mentioned is that generally speaking, our zoning ordinance, when it comes to retail and commercial uses, it allows for a broad range of accessory uses, it's called. So it allows a business, if they want to head off, like, you know, by way of example, you can go to Curry Hardware now and buy those Yeti mugs. And one wouldn't necessarily tie the two together, but that's somewhat of an accessory business that they've expanded into. So we're generally liberal when it comes to accessory uses, and I'm concerned that the language here, that if it's employed literally, or applied literally, that some of the businesses in the city now that do auto repair and motor II sales might have a problem. So that'd be something that I would respectfully suggest you look at.
Thank you. And I think what I said to you kind of before the meeting is, the intention is that this isn't just about used automotive, used sales, used automotive sales. It goes with auto repair licenses too. And our auto repair license, my understanding is the auto repair license is called a motor II. That we, as a city, lump the two of them in, it's the same license. In order to open up a used car place, you need a motor II license. In order to open up a repair place, a muffler repair shop, you need a motor II license. So perhaps we take out the word used automotive sales and only reference motor II licenses. You know, the principal use of the location is for motor II purposes, and at some point elsewhere, in a definition section, define motor II to be automotive, comma.
That would solve.
Okay.
That's something easy to clean up. When I heard you talking about the purpose behind the proposal, I understood that that was probably what you were thinking. So that's helpful.
Any night that you understand what I'm thinking is a good night in my book. Any other thoughts?
Just briefly, your last section, and we talked about this, the grandfathering, that's the term we use, Section E. It is good to indicate an effective date. And you've said July 1 of 2018. That's a good idea for folks going forward. However, the current licenses expire by law on, the term used under the state statutes is the first day of January. We've said December 31, they're practically the same thing. So in any event, the current licenses that are out there are just inherently grandfathered, and they might run into some issues when they renew in 2018. So you really don't need to include the grandfathering protection. It was good that you did so, and your intent, as you expressed it to me, was to protect existing businesses. But the fact of the matter is, we're not going to go out and revoke or, you know, suspend licenses because they don't now comply. They're in compliance as of the beginning of this year when they got their license, and they have a right to hold it unless they're brought in for disciplinary measures.
Okay. Do you think that needs to be changed, or is it just essentially extra verbiage that is harmless in there?
Well, I mean, my suggestion would be, and we can talk about it, is you can just put, "This ordinance shall take effect on July 1, 2018, period." And then the rest of the language, which was your attempt to address grandfathering, can be something perhaps reduced to a memo that's provided to the license board at renewal time. These are the issues you should be looking at for existing businesses.
So you'd put a period after July 1, 2018, and then the next part would be, "Said licensees shall be eligible for relicensing," and so you take out the three, those three sentences?
Yeah. You can either leave that, or you don't even need it.
Okay.
Because they are eligible.
Right.
They're going to, they come forward and apply, and then we apply this, and Madam Clerk and her operation will determine how things go.
Okay. So there's no issue, because of the licenses renew on an annual basis anyways, there's no issue with somebody who's held a license since, you know, 1950, having a solid legal basis to say they're grandfathered in, and these disordinants wouldn't apply to them?
Right. Because the licenses by law expire every year. It's like, I just renewed my driver's license. I think it was good for four or five years, or whatever it was. I couldn't go in and claim that I had grandfather rights. Fortuitous, I have to take an eye test this year, but I did get it back administratively. There's a presumption that this process would work in a similar fashion, that it's going to be somewhat administrative. But the fact of the matter is, no one's entitled to have this license. It's not, you know, an entitlement or anything constitutionally protected, so they don't have that type of interest in it.
And otherwise, your review, other than the two issues you raised, otherwise your review of the legislation?
Yes.
It meets your solicitor office's stamp of approval?
It was well done, yes.
Okay. Anybody have a question for the solicitor? Look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. You, no, you have to sit here. No, no, they can go, you have to sit. This is my opportunity to punish you. Yeah, no, you can go. Thank you. What do we get? Five minutes before public hearing? 15 minutes? Hold on one second. Yeah, we'll take a 10-minute recess. Just to the folks out there, or I could just talk for 10 minutes. So the, yeah, everyone said recess. I don't know if you caught that. Just to the folks out there, we're just going to take a recess because the public hearing, which is when we invite the public to weigh in on the ordinance, by law, it's posted for 8:15, so we can't start it now. So we'll come back, 8:15, I'll go back on the record, and we'll have people come up. One thing I did forget to say at the beginning, I'm supposed to read this thing about the open meeting law. Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 28, I'm just going to paraphrase this, essentially says, "Attendees at a public meeting can be recorded by John Rotophile and anyone else who wants to make a recording, and that can be broadcast in any way that they want." So if you want to speak in public, you may be recorded, and that's all legal. So if you're super shy, maybe write us a letter. I don't know. But, all right. So we'll recess for 10 minutes, we'll come back and hopefully get some solid input from folks. Okay? All right.
All right, it being 8:15, I'm going to reconvene the Oversight Committee meeting. We are going to go forward with the public hearing portion and ask for comments from the public. Do I have a piece of paper?
There's sign-in sheets out in the back.
There is sign-in sheets out in the back. If folks want to sign in favor of the ordinance, if folks want to sign against the ordinance, or folks are just looking to sign things with no real opinion, you can sign that sheet in the back. Same goes for up here. Anybody who wants to speak, come on up. We just asked that you state your name, your address, and you know, you keep your comments relatively brief. I mean, say what you got to say, but you know, it's not a filibuster. We're not planning on voting on it tonight, so no filibuster is going to stop us from acting because we're not planning on acting. So with that being said, I will open up the public hearing and anybody from the public who wishes to weigh in, in favor. Do I have to do in favor, against?
No, they could just come on up.
Yeah, just come on up. I don't favor, against. Anyone who's not a lawyer, just come on up.
He's an attorney.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, you did. So you grandfathered in, is what you're saying, counsel? All right. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Christopher Harrington. I live 127 Prospect Avenue in Quincy. And I'm a lifelong resident of the city, graduated from high school. So I'm here, kind of in a bit of mixed capacity. I have a few clients who have more than two licenses. And when I heard there were going to be changes to the motor to the rules, I decided to get a copy of the proposed ordinance and read it and see what impact it might have on them. But I'm also a resident of the city of Quincy. I live here and I appreciate Council of Alphonsi's reasons for wanting to do this, to have businesses that are attractive, not jammed, full of cars, and you know, try to improve our neighborhoods. And so also, I think having these fair, consistent rules on the size of parking spaces and how many cars you can have on a piece of property would go a long way. I started practicing law full-time in 2004, and a motor II application was one of the first cases I handled when I first opened my office. And I was surprised to learn today that there are a lot of licensees out there who have been around since the 40s or 50s or 60s, who have never done a plan for their property and do not have a number in their license. Because every motor II license that I've filed since 2004 has had a parking plan with a number of cars with it. And I can remember going before Joe Shea and Drew Shealy and having them look at me and say, "So how many cars do you want?" "Oh, I'd like 12." And having them look at me and say, "There's no way you're going to fit 12 cars on this property. We'll give you eight." And because they would look at the property and they would judge for themselves how much room was there and how many cars could reasonably fit. As I was reading through this, I want to point out a few things that I think, issues to be concerned about, to make possibly change before it's enacted, to make sure that you don't come up with problems in the future. The minimum standards in the proposed ordinance satisfies all applicable requirements of the city's zoning ordinance. If you look at the motor II licensees, the list of motor II licensees, most of them are not in the used car business. Most of them are repair shops, auto body shops, and they have a motor II license because you have to have a motor II license in order to go to any of the wholesale auctions in the Commonwealth. They have to have a motor II license to go to Rashudi Drive, or to Framingham, or any of the other places that conduct auctions to businesses. And so most of these businesses are located in old gas stations from you know, the 1940s and 1950s. So one of the requirements that it has to satisfy are all the applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance. I think we need to be careful that a lot of these businesses are located on pieces of property that are non-conforming. They don't comply with all the requirements of the zoning ordinance, the size of the lot, building setbacks, parking setbacks, landscaping, things like that. So many of these pieces of property are non-conforming pieces of property. Also, this issue was brought up by one of the previous speakers. The principal use is used auto sales on motor II. You know, as one example, Chuck Ayers is a client of mine. Chuck has a motor II license. He's an auto body shop. That's his principal business, but he has a motor II license. So not every person who has a motor II license, it won't be their principal business where they are. The one issue, I think, of everything in here that I took the most exception to, that I really believe should be changed, is you know, no space being smaller than 10 feet by 20 feet. I think that that size is, I think it's too big. I think it's excessive. I think it's unnecessary that the spot needs to be that big. And the reason why is, in our zoning ordinance, our zoning ordinance requires a parking space to be nine feet by 18 feet. That's what's in our ordinance. So Stop &amp; Shop, BJ's, Crown Colony, all of these places where people, customers, patients, customers, people who work in office buildings, those spaces are nine by 18. And the reason why they're nine by 18 is because the people who use those parking spaces, they're pulling their cars into the parking space. So they're driving up the aisle and they're swinging the car into the parking space, and when they're leaving, they're swinging out of it. Those spaces need to be big enough to give cars room to be able to swing in and swing out. And at a supermarket, there has to be enough room to be able to open the car doors, take the kids out of the backseat, load the groceries, and all of that. So that size is for you know, a member of the general public in a space where people are going in and out of that space all day, loading and unloading passengers, loading and unloading stuff at BJ's, or Stop &amp; Shop, or Walmart, wherever they are. Used cars, they don't move in and out of the space all day long. The used car is the product that that business sells. It's their inventory. And they just need a spot that's big enough to accommodate that car, where it sits with the "for sale" sign on the windshield and the price across the windshield. I went online today and just as a couple of examples, it's amazing what you can get on Google. I just Googled dimensions of 2018 Toyota Camry. A Toyota Camry or a Honda Accord, most people consider a mid-sized car. Those cars are six feet wide, 16 feet long. A Chevy Tahoe, which most people consider a large vehicle, is six and three-quarter feet wide, 17 feet long. And a Ford Explorer, six and a half feet wide, 16.5 feet long. So for a mid-sized car, you could fit that car in a space that's about, say, seven and a half by 16. And for a full-size vehicle, like a full-size pickup, a Silverado, or a Tahoe, it can fit in a space approximately eight feet by 17 feet. And that leaves enough room to open the doors for someone to be able to get in and out of the car and move it. On a used car lot, when a customer comes in and wants to take a car for a test drive, either the owner of the company or a salesperson who works there is going to get in that car, back it out of the space, put the plate on it, take it for a test drive, and the employee will put it back in the space. The space for that used car, my point is, doesn't need to be as big as the spaces that you'd have at Stop &amp; Shop, or BJ's, or Crown Colony. And so that was, I think that was my primary concern, that not having an unrealistic or an excessive requirement on the size of the space, which might address a lot of the other issues that we're concerned about. There was also a question, Counselor Palmucci, we spoke briefly this afternoon, about the whole grandfathering issue. And the way this is written and the way you explained it to me is that the licenses aren't going to be grandfathered, that if you have a lot that doesn't comply with zoning and parking spaces that don't comply with zoning, you're not automatically grandfathered going forward with this new license. And so I think for that reason, that makes it even more important where the existing businesses aren't going to be grandfathered, to have a standard that's realistic and works going forward. And I'd appreciate it if you would take a serious look at changing that requirement. Other than that, I had some questions about what this might do to transferring licenses and when businesses try to sell their businesses, when a person goes to retire. But those issues really were answered by your answer, that there isn't going to be grandfathering. So that pretty much takes care of those issues. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Any other member of the public wishing to speak in favor, against, or just in general? No, come on. Come on up. Remember to state your name and your address for the record.
Hi, I'm Nancy Sodillo-Stansbury. I live at 32 Newcombe Street.
Hi, Nancy.
Across the street from Hassan Brothers. And when Hassan Brothers moved in, I was totally for them. I thought it was going to be a used car lot with an automotive repair. Well, it's turned out to be nothing but a junkyard. There's cars, there's been cars there that have had their, you know, backs open for months and months and months. I don't think there's a car there that's worth selling. And it's awful. So I, you know, something needs to be done about it. I mean, it's just absolutely ridiculous. And lots of times, there'll be cars parked out on the street, you know, kids can't walk to the high school, you know, and this morning at 10 minutes of 6:00, I mean, I was on my way to work, but they're picking up the trash. I don't know if we have any ordinances lined for trash pickups for these businesses, or... But I'm totally, you know, against them. They really need to do something about it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else in favor, against, indifferent? Remember, you can sign in the back, too? Really? Nobody else is going to... Come on. There's got to be people who don't like this ordinance, right? For the record, I did invite every license... No, not you, John. I did invite every license holder to come, let them know that it'd be an opportunity for them to be heard if they want to...
John Roderfeld, 62 Graham Wall Road.
Hi, John.
Basically, I'm looking for, you know, I looked at the town of Needham. They had some good zoning in there. If you looked at their parking requirements, basically, there's laws that say how big a car can be. You know, the federal government, there is no car that can be over 18 feet long, and there's no car that can be over nine feet wide. So no car can even be built. But also, people might be selling Mini Coopers. So one of the things that says in the Needham law is that the parking layout must be so every parking space, the car can get out of that parking space without moving another car. So let them design a parking lot, so if they are selling Mini cars, or you know, LeCarrs or something small, it's up to them. And I'm interested in consumer protection, and basically making sure that maybe you put something in there saying that they have the titles to all the cars on premises, and maybe something saying that they have to put what the price of the car is on a sticker price with the VIN number, and have a list of all the cars that they have for sale. So therefore, when you go there, you'll be able to say how many of these cars are for sale, how many of these cars are being fixed. So you know, I would almost take out the language of how big the space could be, because they're all going to argue about that. That's one of their main things. But if you add that language, saying that you have to get in and out of it, that would work. So you know, it's a, we need some ordinances. I mean, I think the fines also are extremely low. I was trying to say that the five people that sit on the license board all make a lot of money, and basically, their time is valuable. So I remember a Callahan tap thing that took an hour of five people that maybe make $50 to $100 an hour. So fining someone $100 is really nothing, you know? It might even be worth paying the fine. So I would like to see a third offense, a fourth offense, you know? I mean, the second offense, third offense, you know, fifth offense, and then keep going, you know? One, two, 500, 1,000. I mean, $100 is really nothing. I would like to see it be higher, because most of the time, I guarantee you, when Jay goes there, he's not going to find them. So $100 fine would mean, basically, they're always going to get that fine, you know? And then, basically, maybe keep that $100 fine for maybe five times, then it goes up to a $500 fine. So therefore, they're fine with paying the fine. Some people might be like, whatever, we're going to pay the fine. So we have to make something that is enforceable. The license board does a great job. I go there all the time. And thank you.
Thank you, John. Anybody else wishing to speak, weigh in on the ordinance, in favor, against, indifferent?
My name is John Hayne. I live 354 East Gwinnett Street.
Hi, John.
There's a gas station at the back of my house. He's only supposed to have two cars for sale, but if you go out there, you'll find a lot of cars without plates on it. It's also like a junkyard. They've come down over the last five years, and this guy continually violates whatever ordinance that was put on him, which happened a few times. I don't know what, it's only lately that they went down and cleared out again. Now I look out again today, and it's... And when you do set the cars, they're packed in like sardines along the fence. There's also a truck there with body, auto body parts, and another truck over further with junk. And this continually all the time. I don't, I don't know why I even came here, because I went down to Duke a few times, and he said it's the gateway to the city. It's still the same thing all the time. I'm just getting a runaround all the time. It was only before Christmas that I talked to somebody from City Hall, who was a friend of a friend of mine, that he went down and gave them another, you know, another fine or whatever, or another time, or he'll be closed down. And he should have been closed down five years ago, because it was, this is what, it's on and on and on, sort of, and it's not right, sort of, and I'm 80 years old, I don't read that stuff, so I know, you know? So this guy, he has no consideration for the neighbors or anything else, so he hasn't. It's only a two-car garage, so you can imagine how many cars, he might get 40 cars there and 45 cars there at a time. And like I said, the used cars, there's only supposed to be two, that's according to the ordinance, but a lot of the cars there have no plates. That's all I got to say. All right?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you weighing in. Anybody else? Going once? Going twice? Oh, here we go. All right. Now we got some takers. I just can't believe that there's no one who's opposed to this ordinance who would be here. Ma'am, if you could please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Katie Smith, 291 Water Street, owner of Smith Auto Sales. Everything in this ordinance, we already abide by. The only problem I have is the size of the parking space of 10 by 20. We've been in business for 23 years. I think we run a pretty decent, respectable business. And if you put us into a 10 by 20 parking space, you basically put us down to two to three vehicles and honestly put us out of business. Everything else, the license, the repairs, dealer plates, bonds, we all go by that. I just don't know why the people who are in violation, have you brought them in? I mean, you're kind of paging a wide brush across the board. So if you brought their people in violations and maybe had them clean up their area. So that's my opinion, just the size of the parking space. We can reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. If I could ask you before you leave, I know it's not really a back and forth, these sessions, but what, do you have a recommendation on what you think the size should be in the spots?
I think what the gentleman said, it was perfect. I mean, right now, it's basically mid-sized vehicles. I mean, you put a 10 by 20, it's bigger than a Suburban. And I probably wouldn't be able to open my front doors, and like he said, we, when we have a test drive, we pull the vehicle out, we put the plate on, the customer takes it, brings it back, we put it back in the parking space. It's basically, that's our showcase. There's not people opening up the doors, people, you know, two, three people at the same time. I think the size that he's mentioned with a Honda or a Camry, that's the perfect size. I mean, that's what people buy now. I mean, the larger SUVs really aren't...
Okay. Thank you very much.
...popular. Thank you.
Appreciate you weighing in. All right, anybody else? Somebody else stood up once you... Go ahead. Here we go. Good evening, sir. Please remember to state your name and your address for the record.
Okay, my name is Michael Campelli, owner of C and L Auto Sales on Copas Street.
Hi, Mike.
I had some concern about the language in the letter there where it talked about painting lines in the parking lot, and identifying them for what they're going to be used as far as display, customer, employee, parking, that type of thing. Those things can, they can change from time to time, you know? You might get better traffic coming in the morning from one side, you may want to display some of your vehicles on that side halfway through the day. And so if you start saying, "This is display, this is employee," how strict is it going to be that somebody's going to come by and say, "Well, that's a for-sale sign, but it's an employee parking spot." You know, you want to be able to showcase what you have to the best of your ability. You want to be able to showcase what you have to the best of your ability, not to mention incurring the expense of now putting lines in there and labeling it all. The other thing is, you know, we, as it came up about the size of the cars, you, I'm sure you've pulled into many parking garages and you see the sections for compact cars only. There's a perfect example of somebody utilizing their space to the maximum. So that's my concern on that.
Thank you. Appreciate you weighing in. All right, last call. Anybody else want to make a statement in favor, against, or indifferent? Remember, you can sign in the back as well. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Russell E. Kelkhorst. I'm a registered voter in the city of Quincy. I live in Ward 1, Precinct 4. And I'm totally against this proposed ordinance.
Sorry, sir, can you just, what's your address for the record?
116 Rota, RHODA.
All right, go back to your state.
That's Rock Island Cove.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm totally against this proposal. I think that it's going to target the small auto body and auto dealers. I look at the Quincy Shipyard. Danny Quirk has got thousands of cars there. And I'm sure you're not going to target Dan, because he's got too much money, and he can hire the best attorneys. So my suggestion to the Oversight Committee is to spend more time on the drug problem we have in this city. It's not the automobile dealers, the body shop dealers, the auto body shops. I mean, I've taken my vehicles to Mike Campanelli, C&amp;L Auto Body, for years, and he runs a great shop. And I read the letter you sent him, Counselor. And I disagree. I think we have too much government oversight now in the city. I think that in the country. And I think we need more focus on the drug problem. Copeland Street, I mean, there's drug dealers and running amok. How many children have we lost? Let's put our energy and our money and our resources to a better use, correct the drug problem first. All right? I rest my case.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you weighing in. All right, anybody else want to weigh in, one way or another? All right, name and address for the record.
My name is Angelo Sodano. I have an owner shop on 642 Washington Street. I've been over there for 40 years. A lot of the rules that you wrote, they were already there. They just maybe never were written down. Whenever you sell your property or business, the person that acquires your business, you need to reapply for a license, because his name got to be on that license. So a lot of things that you're trying to clarify, I appreciate it, but I'm more concerned about it. I'm 71 years old, and I'm in the process of thinking about retiring or moving on. And what's going to happen to me if I cannot sell my business? It's not clarity in that, except the gentleman made a very nice clarification. I think you've got to think about it, then, one, they're going to move on. I have no issue, I've been in the city for, as a business, for 40 years. I lived for 10 years. It's a city that I call mine, but I'm more concerned is that this legislation, if it gets pushed through and gets done, we're not even more consideration. I was surprised that no more people like me are here, because this is, should be the concern. The concern should be, what's going to happen to my livelihood if I don't show up? So shame on them for not being there. But also, I don't think we should be penalized for the few people that abuse the system, they park on the sidewalk, or they can, just have a tow truck pull the cars out. They're going to move it. Just have the policeman pull the truck, the car out, put an impound, and let them pay $600, $700. And penalize their way. Don't penalize me or the other people in here. They don't have nothing to do with that. I'm a, I'm a good citizen. I'm here because I have concerns. But don't penalize us because a few bad apples. Move them. My concern is, that's my concern, but other than that, it's not much new in the, in your new law. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here and weighing in. I agree with you, that it helps when the folks who are affected by it come in and speak. All right, seeing nobody else, remind folks, I'll close the public hearing. I'll remind folks that you can sign in favor, against, or just because you like signing things in the back of the room. Also, I will leave, it's not my intention to take a vote, as I indicated in my opening remarks on this this evening. I will leave the public comment period open as it relates to written comments that anyone wants to submit. So, Mr. Harrington, if you wanted to submit something in writing, anybody else, if you didn't want to speak publicly, you can send to myself or to the clerk of committees any written correspondence that you have relative to this, in favor, in support, those are the same thing. You can only write if you're in support of it. No. If you're in support, if you're against, if you're indifferent, if you have suggestions, if you have thoughts, size of the spaces is obviously an issue that some folks have. So if there's anything you want to share with the committee, I invite the public to still do so. You can do it by way of letter, email, we'll accept that. We'll put it into the record, make sure it's distributed to the members of the council. That being said, do any councilors have any comments, anything you want to say? All right. So I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I want to thank the folks who came out, provided testimony, both members of the public and members of the administration. And I'll close just with saying that, again, the purpose of what we're trying to do here isn't to hurt anybody. It isn't to be more onerous in terms of the regulations that small business owners must comply with. It's really to bring some uniformity to the regulations. I think the testimony was clear tonight from the city clerk, from Mr. Duca, that quite frankly, we can't enforce anything now, because we have no regulations, that there are two different playbooks that people are operating by. There are folks who don't have a number of cars that they're allowed on their site. So they have an unlimited number of cars. And quite frankly, I think that's unfair to the folks who have come in and have a license, have gone through the same practice, the same procedure to get a license, a motor two license, and they're operating in the same city, in the same industry, and they have a cap on the number of spaces. That, to me, is a fundamental unfairness in the way where the city is treating two different business owners. And for no reason other than that, I believe we have a strong need to rectify this, to put in some regulations that solve that issue, because that's a fundamental unfairness between business owners. And the government should never pick winners and losers in any industry. So the goal here is really to put everybody on the same playing field, to notify businesses of what the rules and regulations that we expect them to operate under are, the minimum standards, we expect them to follow in our city, that we're not going to be a city that allows junkyards, plain and simple. No neighbor wants to live near a business that operates as a junkyard. No resident of the city, no business owner in the city, no visitor of the city wants to drive by auto repair places or used car places that look like a junkyard. The city's better than that. So in closing, again, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We'll accept any more comments that people want to make. This is an ongoing process. Happy to make some amendments to this based on what people have said tonight. We'll think on it some more if councilors have thoughts. I'm happy to take amendments from them as well. But this is, you know, this is the way legislation development should work. The public should be involved, the people most affected should be involved. And I hope that, sir, you encourage the other members of your industry to reach out to the council, weigh in with what they like, what they don't like, and make suggestions, because that's, that's what we're here for, is we represent you as well, the business owners of the city of Quincy, as well as the residents. So thank you again, everyone, for coming out. At this point, I will, what's the thing I do? I don't think we need a motion to adjourn, right? See, I don't know how to close a meeting if I'm not yelling "Motion to adjourn." I'll close the public hearing and call to close the Oversight Committee of the City Council. Thank you.